If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the City Council website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise.
President.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Barron.
Here.
Botcher.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Here.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
Delarosa.
Here.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present and excited to be back.
Felice.
Present and happy to be back too.
Ariola.
Present.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Here.
Krishnan. Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marte.
Here.
Menon.
Here.
Moya. Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Here.
Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Here.
Salamanca.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Juan.
Present.
Jaeger. Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation delivered by Father John Delva from Our Lady of Miracles Roman Catholic Church located at 757 East 80th Street in Brooklyn. Welcome.
We stand before you, Holy Spirit, conscious of our sinfulness, but aware that we gathered in your name. Come to us, remain with us, enlightening our hearts. Give us light and strength to know your will and to make it our own and to live it in our lives. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power, for you are our God, sharing the glory of the Father and the Son. You desire justice for all, enable us to hold the rights of others, do not allow us to be misled by your ignorance or corrupted by our fear or favor. You know that our hearts that are always be with you and abound of love and to keep us faithful to all that is true. As a guide today in your name, may we temper justice with love so that all our decisions may be pleasing to you and yearn be rewarded. Promised to be good faithful servants for you, God, forever and ever.
Thank you. I now ask Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse to spread the invocation on the record.
I would like to thank Father John Delva of Our Lady of Miracles Church in Knarsee for being here today. Our Lady of Miracles isn't just a place of worship. For me, it's very special. That's the first church my father attended with me. It is a sanctuary of hope, love, and community in District 46. The church holds a special place in my heart as it serves as a spiritual home to many of my Haitian-American constituents, reflecting the vibrant diversity that makes our district and city so unique and special. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to Father John Delva for the faith, peace, and wisdom he brings to our community. I make a motion for unanimously consent to spread the invocation and full open the record. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Sandy Nurse.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of July 13, 2023, and August 3, 2023 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We'll now have messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communications from city, county, and borough offices.
M173 Richmond County Commissioner of Elections.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. On Monday, we observe the 22nd anniversary of September 11th. As a native New Yorker, I recall the experience of shock and pain of that day and the days thereafter. I know that many of us are still working to heal from the trauma of it. While we continue to support the families of those we lost, we must also uplift the first responders and rescue workers who rush towards danger to look for survivors at ground zero, exposing themselves to life-threatening toxins, as well as those who worked and lived in the area and had their health negatively impacted. Just last week, the FDNY added the names of 43 members who died of illnesses related to their work in the rescue and recovery efforts at the World Trade Center. This adds to the hundreds of first responders who have died from 9/11-related illnesses over the past 22 years. Too many families and victims are still struggling from the aftermath of this tragedy, and it's imperative that the city, state, and federal government provide them with the full support they need to recover. It's through action that we can honor their sacrifice. Now, I want to take a moment to address the alarming rise in xenophobic and hostile sentiments being directed at and about migrants arriving in our city. We must recognize that such sentiment does nothing to address our challenges and brings with it risks to the safety of women, men, children, and everyone's humanity. Throughout history, we've seen how this can translate to real danger and harm for our communities. It is inconsistent with our values as a city and a nation, and we must not permit our -- it will only move us further away from solutions that move our city forward. People seeking asylum are fleeing dire humanitarian conditions. They've endured howering journeys, leaving behind everything they know for the chance to have a better life. This migration to the United States is not entirely unique. Each generation has figured out how to migrate immigrants and refugees and why we have always become a stronger nation because of it. It is a grave mistake to act as if we, as a city, are powerless and that people seeking asylum are a threat or simply a cost. In fact, we all know from the story of New York City itself that migration brings tangible benefits. Throughout our city's history, immigrants have enriched our culture, economy, and communities. When we last faced a fiscal crisis and an exodus of New Yorkers, it was immigrants who played a key role in growing our population and our economy. We're in a similar situation today, and we should recognize that if we address some of the underlying challenges that longtime New Yorkers face, along with asylum seekers, we will be stronger. The reality is longtime New Yorkers from immigrant communities who or who are unhoused have many of the same needs as recent migrants. These needs were insufficiently addressed before this migration, and we owe it to our longtime residents and our entire city to fix this shortfall. We should be investing and strengthening the infrastructure of programs and services that have long been serving New Yorkers without adequate support. By bolstering this infrastructure, all of us will benefit. This is achievable because no challenge is too great for New York City. How we respond in this moment will have long-term implications for all of us. As stakeholders at every level of government and in the nonprofit and private sectors, must set aside their differences to effectively work together to implement solutions that power a long-term strategy that is sustainable. We're always stronger when we're united. We need to come together and advance solutions that best serve the people we represent here in our city, in our state, and in our nation. This week, we laid beloved New York One journalist, our brilliant friend, Rochelle Boone, to rest. Rochelle understood and conveyed the complexities of our communities and this city. She told critical stories about Queens in particular with integrity in heart and flawlessly presented humanity in a way that only she could. She was special and had a spirit that organically brought us together as people. Rochelle represented the very beauty of our city, and we will miss her profoundly. Let's not take any day in this life for granted. I also want to take a moment to remember another New York City giant, George Alomare, a founder of the United Federation of Teachers who passed away last month. George dedicated his life to improving our public school system and successfully fought to improve conditions for New York City's students and educators. Our city has benefited so much from George's leadership and contributions, and we are grateful for him and his lifetime of service. On September 4th, we celebrated Labor Day and the labor movements and leaders that fought for so many of the benefits we enjoy in the workplace today. As the daughter of two longtime union workers, I was raised in a home and in a community that understood the importance of organized labor. From the 40-hour work week to workers' compensation and paid sick leave, we've gained so much because of our nation's labor movements and struggles. As we honor this history, we must recognize the ongoing fights for fair wages, safer workplaces, improved benefits, and the right of all workers to organize without fear of retaliation. These are essential protections that workers deserve. There's still much more work to do, but we're proud to stand alongside of workers each and every day. Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, starts tomorrow evening and runs until Sunday evening. I want to wish everyone a happy and sweet New Year. Shana Tova to all those who celebrate. Tomorrow also marks the start of Hispanic Heritage Month. When we uplift the contributions and achievements of Latino communities across the country, New Yorkers is home to 2.5 million Latino residents of diverse backgrounds, cultures, and traditions. We also recognize the groundbreaking Latino leaders in this body who continue to serve this city with passion and dedication to communities. I look forward to celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with all New Yorkers. I also want to wish a Happy Independence Day to our Costa Rican, Honduran, Salvadoran, and Guatemalan communities who are celebrating on September 15th. September is Suicide Prevention Month. As our city continues to recover from the effects of the pandemic, which exacerbated our pre-existing mental health crisis, it is important that New Yorkers know where to go for support and treatment. As a council, we will continue to work hard to secure the resources our communities need. NYCWELL, counselors are available 24/7 in over 200 languages. Know that you can always call 888-NYC-WELL or 988, the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, for help. September is also National Sickle Cell Awareness Month. Sickle cell disease is the most common inherited blood disorder in the United States and disproportionately affects African-Americans. Understanding the disease can help individuals manage their condition and associated pain, so it is critical that we continue to raise public awareness about this disease. Next week is Climate Week NYC, which will bring stakeholders across government, business, and the climate sector to work together and advance concrete actions. Next Tuesday at 5:30 PM, the council will be celebrating Climate Week right here in the council chambers. I invite everyone to participate. This Sunday is the 54th Annual African American Day Parade in Harlem. Please join us as we celebrate the indelible contributions of our African-American community here in New York City and across our country. And next, please join me in wishing a happy birthday to Councilmember Camila Hanks, whose birthday was on the 4th. Councilmember Gail Brewer, whose birthday was on the 6th. Councilmember Sandra Ung, who celebrated on the 9th. And we have a birthday girl, Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, whose birthday is today. Happy birthday, everyone. Finally, I want to acknowledge that our senior legislative council, Brenda McKinney, is departing after six years of service at the council. During her time here, Brenda effectively served the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries, and International Intergroup Relation, as well as the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. Brenda, as you move up, you are moving down to DC to do bigger and better things, and we thank you for your dedication and service. We wish you all the best in your next chapter. Next, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Four pre-considered resolutions to authorize Article 11 exemptions for eight buildings in Councilmembers Sanchez and Felice's districts. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items. The city council is approving a limited five-year extension of the Madison Square Garden Special Permit and Modified Arena Text Amendment. It is intended to resolve the competing demands on this area and facilitate the collaboration of stakeholders to create a truly integrated arena and transit station complex that the public deserves. The term extension is conditioned on MSG submitting a transportation management plan to start addressing the needs of the public immediately. 893 Eagle Avenue Resoning in Councilmember Salamanca's district will facilitate the development of a new 13-story plus seller and subseller building. It will include approximately 83 affordable supportive housing units with additional space for counseling offices and multipurpose rooms serving the residents of the building. Today, we'll also vote on the following resolutions. First, we have a pair of resolutions sponsored by Councilmember Nantasha Williams. Resolution 346A, which would recognize the contribution of hip-hop to arts and culture by designating August 11th as Hip-Hop Celebration Day, August as Hip-Hop Recognition Month, and November as Hip-Hop History Month annually in the City of New York. And Resolution 450A, which would recognize the contributions of our homegrown Def Jam to the music industry and music lovers everywhere by designating January 2024 as Def Jam Recognition Month in the City of New York. Resolution 415A, sponsored by Councilmember Joanne Ariola, would call on the United States Congress to pass and the president to sign the September 11th Day of Remembrance Act. We thank our staff, Regina Paul. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 1080A, sponsored by Councilmember Lynda Lee, would require the Department of Social Services to make information on emergency feeding and food benefits programs and senior centers available on DSS's website, as well as through Access HRA. The bill would also require DSS, in collaboration with the Department of Aging, to make this information available in written form at job centers, senior centers, SNAP centers, and any other relevant locations. We thank our staff members, David Romero and Amenta Kilowan. Next, we'll vote on Introduction 877B, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Abreu, which would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to create a comprehensive exit survey and interview protocol for city agencies to gather feedback from resigning and retiring municipal employees regarding their experience in the city's workforce. The legislation intended to improve retention of municipal workers would also require DCAST to submit an annual report to the Equal Opportunity Practices Commission and the council with summaries of the exit survey and interview responses. We thank our staff members, Elizabeth Arts, Rie Agoswara, Nicholas Connell, Smita Deshmuk. We will also vote on Introduction 969A, sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, which would require the Department of Small Business Services to provide information on community development financial institutions, or CDFIs, via the one-stop-shop online portal established by Local Law 94 of 2022. CDFIs can provide small businesses and minority and women-owned business enterprises with critical access to capital that supports their success, an issue I highlighted in my State of the City address. Thank you to our staff members, Nicole Kata, Rebecca Barilla, Mark Chen, and Jessica Boulay. Next, we will vote on Introduction 1103A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, which would require the Department of Small Business Services to post information on its website that helps small businesses select banks, including the loans, grants, and services available to them at various banking institutions. Thank you to our staff members, Nicole Kata, Rebecca Barilla, Jessie Fung, and Jessica Boulay. Introduction 263A, also sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would require the Department of Small Business Services to produce an annual report on services provided at Workforce One Career Centers, including the number of people helped in obtaining jobs and job training. Thank you again to our staff members, Nicole Kata, Rebecca Barilla, Tanjia Wright, and Jessica Boulay. Introduction 1066A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would build on the city's efforts to increase the size of its tree canopy by requiring the role of trees to be considered in long-term sustainability planning, in addition to the other factors it already measures in accordance with Local Law 84 of 2013. Access to public pools and learning how to swim was also a part of my State of the City address, and today, we will vote on several related bills. Introduction 1017A, sponsored by Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan, would help the city better prepare for upcoming beach and pool seasons by requiring the Department of Parks and Recreation to submit an annual report to the mayor and council on lifeguard staffing levels and training for the city's pools and beaches, the number of emergencies that occurred at each beach and pool, and the current number of pools that are closed for public use due to maintenance or other issues. Introduction 760A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would require the Department of Parks and Recreation to provide free swimming lessons and water safety instruction to second-grade students in New York City public schools. Second grade is the focus because it's considered an ideal time for children to learn to swim. Introduction 962A, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, would require the Department of Parks and Recreation to identify locations where additional public swimming pools could be built, with a focus on communities that are currently lacking access. The legislation would also require that parks consult with the Department of Education on creating a plan to open its school parks to the public, as well as offer free swimming lessons at indoor swimming pool locations. Thank you to our staff members, Chris Sartori and Patrick Mulvaughill. Lastly, we will vote on Introduction 969, sponsored by Majority Leader Keith Powers, which would establish a first-of-its-kind e-bike battery trade-in program to help remove uncertified batteries that pose fire safety hazards. Individuals would be able to receive new-powered mobility devices, electronic scooters, electric bicycles, et cetera, or lithium-ion batteries to power them that meet relevant fire safety standards. Such devices and batteries would be provided at a reduced or at no cost and available in exchange for the surrender of devices that do not comply with fire standards or are otherwise illegal. Thank you to our staff members, Rachel Cordero, David Seitzer, Josh Kingsley, and William Hongak. Thank you very much for your attention, and now I turn it back over to our majority leader.
Thank you. Speaker Adams, we're going to move into the discussion of general orders. Also want to note that we have some resolutions to vote on today, so we'll need to maintain quorum here today when we vote on the resolutions. We will first hear from Councilmember Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I wanted to talk today about the tree bill. I know that we all feel very strongly about them. Canopy, vegetation, all part of our city's sustainability. This is 1066. Clean air and water. And what this bill would do is require the Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability to consider the role of trees and the canopy and vegetation as they do sustainable planning. And that would add to the protection and preservation of trees and vegetation, as they talk about solar and wind and other important issues. When Mayor Bloomberg launched Million Tree Initiative, there wasn't a requirement for the city to take progress on this initiative, and I'm afraid some trees have died as a result and people not watering them. But we need to make sure that in the future that does not happen. Obviously, the mayor Adams has planned NYC, plans for growth and sustainability, and we want to make sure that trees are a part of that discussion. I have much of a tree hugger, as many people here are, and we did count all the empty tree pits in our district, and we hope that they are planted. It does take 10 years until the tree becomes carbon neutral. I certainly want to thank the speaker. I want to thank Shula Pooter from my staff and the wonderful Parks Chair, Councilmember Krishnan, and we look forward to passing this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmember Botcher.
Thank you. I'm so excited to sit here alongside the speaker and my colleagues here today to talk about the importance of water safety and how the council is addressing the issue legislatively. Too many New Yorkers are deprived of the opportunity to learn to swim and to swim safely. Pool access provides community members, including and especially children, the chance to develop swimming skills in a supervised environment. But 18 council districts, most of which are in historically underserved out-of-borough communities, lack public pools. We must do better, and that's why we're passing a package of bills today to improve water safety and equitable access to swimming in New York City. I am proud to sponsor Introduction 962, which requires the Parks Department to conduct the survey of sites owned by the city to identify locations where additional swimming pools could be built, with a focus on communities that do not have access to pools. Parks will also have to assess the ongoing capital needs of its pools and update the assessment and work with the Department of Education to create a plan to open school pools for public use. Every New Yorker should have the opportunity to swim, not only to enjoy the city's waters, but to protect themselves from danger. I want to thank my colleagues, as well especially Chair Shekhar Krishnan, for his stewardship on these critical bills within the package that we are voting on today. I know this council will continue to fight for equitable access to the pools and programming that empower members of our community to swim safely. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Botcher, followed by Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you.
Thank you. The greatest city in the world deserves the greatest transportation infrastructure in the world, and we should accept nothing less. Today, the City Council is channeling the voices of millions of New Yorkers who are fed up by the current state of Penn Station. By granting Madison Square Garden a five-year special permit, we're setting a clock that will help bring all the stakeholders to the table to fix Penn Station now. For the first time in decades, we have the opportunity to truly create a great Penn Station. That opportunity is here. We cannot afford to wait any longer. The time for action is now. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams, the council, land use staff, Peris Strater, William Vidal, Arthur Hub, Chelsea Kelly, and everyone here at the City Council for their partnership. I want to thank all the community members who made their voices heard, my colleagues in government, Community Board Five. I want to thank the staff at Madison Square Garden. I want to thank everyone who's helping to work on this issue together. I know that we will achieve the Penn Station that New Yorkers need and deserve.
Thank you. We'll have Councilmember Krishnan, followed by Councilmember Menon.
Today, the New York City Council will pass landmark legislation that will bring more trees, more pools and lifeguards, and free swim classes to New Yorkers. The bills are a direct response to the urgency of the climate crisis, as well as chronic disparities in tree cover and access to pools and life-saving aquatics education. Intro 1066, sponsored by Councilmember Brewer, requires the city to include trees and tree canopy in its long-term sustainability planning framework. Intro 962, sponsored by Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, requires the city to identify sites where it could build additional public pools, with a focus on communities that do not have access to such pools. And Intro 760, sponsored by Councilmember Menon, makes swimming lessons free for children in second. Requires the Parks Department to report on the seasonal recruitment of lifeguards, the number of beach and pool emergencies, and the number of pools that are closed due to maintenance or other issues. After a summer of extreme heat and wildfire smoke, crowded pools, and lifeguard shortages, our legislation will make our city cooler, greener, and more resilient. I've been proud to work on these pieces of legislation with Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Brewer, and I thank them for their leadership. And thank you, Speaker Adams, in particular, for your leadership in this council of prioritizing our parks, pools, public pools, and water safety education for all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Menon, followed by Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you so much. Today, I'm very excited that three of my bills are being voted on, and I want to congratulate all of my colleagues on their respective bills. Councilmembers Shekhar Krishnan and Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, who also have bills as part of this incredible water safety package. I'm so thrilled that we'll be voting on Intro 760, which is my bill that requires the Department of Parks and the Department of Education to provide free swim lessons to all public school second graders. This is a matter of equity and inclusion. It is shameful that 27% of New York City public school students do not know how to swim, and we need to end this practice once and for all, and through this water safety package, we're going to be able to do that. I'm also thrilled at Councilmember Narcisse's bill, and both Councilmember Narcisse and myself have bills in the Small Business Committee. I have one bill which requires that SBS is finally going to report on Workforce One Centers and how many job applicants are getting access to jobs, so we can have this data. And then my bill, Intro 1103, which requires SBS to provide information to small businesses and banks. With the bank crisis that happened earlier this year with SVB and Signature, so many small businesses lost access to capital, and we cannot have that. So it's very important that we continue to make sure that our small businesses have access to capital that they need. I really want to thank our Speaker, who prioritized water safety in her State of the City, and I want to thank her for her leadership, and also thank Jeff Baker, Andrea Vasquez, Jeremy John, my Chief of Staff Jonathan Schutt, and the rest of my team, and I urge my colleagues to vote aye on these legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to all legislative divisions that help us to come up with some great bills that can make New York City a place where we can actually leave work and enjoy at the same time. 968 is basically CDFIs. To get the creative opportunity is making sure that we're championing transparency, accessibility, we can collaborate with the institution, and to build a pathway for equitable prosperity in our beloved city. I urge, I encourage all my colleagues to support this, because as a former entrepreneur, one of the things, when you can have the lawn around you, you can have all the opportunities, but if you don't know it, you cannot access it. So let's collaborate to ensure that our entrepreneurs, our moms and pops shop, our emerging innovators have access to resources they need. By supporting this bill, we send a clear message to New York City that we believe in the power and the potential of small businesses and lay down the groundwork for prosperous post-pandemic. That's what I'm asking, so I thank you all, and I'm looking forward for the support to vote on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak at this time, we will move into the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
For the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, Intro 877B, exit surveys.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
For the Committee on Finance, pre-considered Reso 744 Transparency Resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 255 and Resolution 778 through pre-considered LU 258 and Resolution 781, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
For the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management, Intro 949A, powered mobility devices.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
For the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 1080A, emergency feeding programs.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
For the Committee on Land Use, LU's 245 and 246, MSG special permit.
Approved modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU 250 and Reso 782 through LU 252 and Reso 784, 893 Eagle Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
For the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intros 760A, 962A, and 1017A, swimming pools and lifeguards.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Introduction 1066A, tree canopies.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
For the Committee on Small Business, Intro 263A, Workforce One Centers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 969A, local community development and financial institutions.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1103A, loans and grants for small businesses.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, LU 245 and Reso 785, and LU 246 and Reso 786 MSG permit.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Menon.
Aye on all.
Aviles.
Aye on all.
Abreu.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, this body is voting on our bill, Intro 877B, which would create exit surveys and an interview protocol to be administered to resigning and retiring municipal employees. The bill would require both an electronic exit survey, as well as randomized in-person interviews, to gather crucial data on employee experiences during their time in the workforce. With this bill, exit interviews will be standard across all city agencies, giving employees an opportunity to speak about what works and what doesn't. And that data will be reported back to the council, so we can address the challenges our municipal workforce faces. To put it plainly, the status quo has not been working. We are losing good people, but we haven't asked why. Why are you leaving? What would it take for you to remain in public service? How can the city be a better employer? We need that testimony to make a worker-informed plan for attracting and retaining talent. I am proud to have the support of DC 37 and the Phi Borough Institute, which included this bill as a priority in their policy brief solving the staffing crisis. We can do better, we must do better, and we will do better. The city services that our constituents rely on depend on it, and this bill is a crucial first step in getting the people's business done. Thank you to Speaker Adams for making this a priority, Chair De La Rosa for her support in the Civil Service and Labor Committee, as well as Jeff Baker, Andrea Vasquez, Elizabeth Arts, Nicholas Connell, and my staff, Jalisa Quigley. I encourage my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you so much. I vote aye.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Areola.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye.
Barron.
May I explain my vote? I want to commend my-
Yes, you may explain your vote.
I forgot, I don't, I don't, I made a mistake and asked permission.
That's a good point.
I want to commend my colleague on the Madison Square Garden legislation, because Madison Square Garden, and we need to send something up to the state, they pay zero state tax. So this is at a time where we're talking about how much revenue we need, and yet Madison Square Garden, whose franchise is worth $6.1 billion, and these white men who own all of the NBA franchises, sit on their butts, make billions, and the only thing we talk about is the 10, 20, 30, 40 million that the black players make who risk injury and have to bust a sweat. So Madison Square Garden, in addition to this five-year permit, I'm glad it's not 10, we need to call on the state to make sure that they pay their fair share of taxes, because in this trying time, when you need money for migrants, and we need money for those of us, our people who are in shelters now, and I want to commend the Speaker on a powerful message on balancing, getting our folk out of the shelters and having room, and respecting them, and then also respecting migrants that come in, because many of us, they're related to us as we talk and sit and do our things here in the City Council. So Madison Square Garden and many other places, they need to pay their fair share of taxes, and this is not as relevant, but it's in another city, the Chicago Bulls are worth $4.1 billion, and for 10 years, they only paid Michael Jordan $4 million, and to his last two years, $4 million a year, and his last two years, he made $30. This is a rip-off, the NBA, for the players, and I'm glad Madison Square Garden will be held to some level of accountability about. Aye on all.
Thank you. Botcher.
Aye on all.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye on all.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye on all, and I'd like to congratulate all my colleagues passing bills today.
Thank you. Carr.
I'd like to disclose on the record that we're funding CUNY and the Transparency Resolution before today, and my husband is a student at CUNY, as well as funding the Jewish Community Center of Staten Island, of which I am a member. I vote aye on all.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
I'd like to disclose that we're funding CUNY, and I am an adjunct lecturer in the system. Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Holden.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
I would like to state for a record that my daughter is a student at CUNY, and our Transparency Resolution funding CUNY, and aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
I would like to disclose for the record that we are funding CUNY, my sister's an adjunct professor, and we're funding CCC, in which I am a member.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Marte.
Aye.
Meili.
Aye on all.
Narcisse.
Let's rebuild our economy in the week of COVID, I vote aye on all.
Nurse.
Aye on all.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
Aye on all.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson, Jordan.
I vote aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
I would like to disclose on the record that my sibling is an adjunct lecturer at CUNY, and with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Valesquez.
I'd like to disclose on the record, my brother is a board member of Samaritans of New York, and my spouse works at DEDEP. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I'd like to disclose for the record that I'm still a student at CUNY, hopefully for not so much longer, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Juan.
Aye on all.
Jaeger. Borelli.
I'd like to disclose on the record that CUNY hired me back, so I am a distinguished adjunct at a fine institution, College of Staten Island, where I am proud to have taught since 2008, and with that, I vote aye on all. You can all come teach in my, come talk in my class, too, if you like.
Thank you, Councilmember. Powers.
I vote aye, and I'm deeply concerned for Joe Borelli's students. I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I'd like to associate my comments with the comments of those at the Majority Leader concerning Councilmember Borelli. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions. We will now move, oh, sorry, we have the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees, as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move into the discussion of resolutions. We have one minute each. We will first start with Councilmember Williams, and will be followed by Councilmember Areola.
Thank you. I rise today to speak on two resolutions on today's agenda, Reso 346, acknowledging Hip-Hop History Month, and Reso 450, acknowledging the contributions of Def Jam to the music industry. First, before I begin, I want to thank Universal Music Group, who's here today, represented by Alexandra Williams and Dr. Charlene Thomas from Def Jam Recordings, who is unavailable to be with us today for their support. They've been very supportive partners on getting both resolutions done and providing edits. Although my dear colleagues from the Bronx can proudly own their borough as the birthplace of hip-hop, Queens really laid the foundation. Queens is the home of Run DMC, 50 Cent, Nicki Minaj, Nas, LL Cool J, Salt N' Pepper, and A Tribe Called Quest, and many, many others, who fundamentally changed the game.
Hold on, quiet, quiet, quiet.
It's cool, because y'all gonna give me more time. Queens has been the place where stories are told, friends are mourned, adventures are had, and legends are made. Queens and the 27th Council District in particular is such an overlooked part of hip-hop history. I am proud to take this moment to give it the acknowledgement it deserves. Hip-hop has shifted culture and changed lives, and it's an honor-
Please give me down.
Hip-hop has shifted culture and changed lives, and it's an honor to sponsor these resolutions. I'm not hating on other boroughs, I'm just repping minds. Queens get the money, big Queens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Areola.
I'd like to disclose that my son works for sanitation, and it is part of the transparency document. All of us that were around the day of 9/11 remember the solemn pledge we made to those who were lost, who lost their lives. Never forget that promise is precisely why it is so important that the September 11th is to be made into a national, federal holiday or day of remembrance, so that future generations of Americans can count, continue that honor of pledge. In fact, Reso 415A was inspired by mail received from two school-aged children from the St. Francis de Sales Catholic Academy in Bell Harbor, Lexi and Anthony Gennaro. Lexi and Anthony Gennaro. The Gennaros never met their aunt, who perished in the towers, but they felt that establishing September 11th as a federal day of remembrance would ensure that her memory and the memory of the 10, of the thousand of others lost that day would never be erased from the memory of time. It would ensure that we set aside one day each year to remember those we lost. Already, the decision to remember September 11th has been made at the city and state levels across the United States. It's now time to officially make it a federally level, federal-level-recognized day. Thank you, Speaker Adams, for being supportive of this bill, Chair Chiose and his committee for hearing and passing the resolution at today's hearing, all of our cosponsors, and especially Lexi and Anthony Gennaro for their passion and leadership in creating this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 346A recognizes the contribution of hip hop to arts and culture by designating August 11th as Hip-Hop Celebration Day, August as Hip-Hop Recognition, Recognition Month, and November as Hip-Hop History Month annually in the City of New York. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Chuck, Chuck.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 415A calls on the United States Congress to pass and the President to sign the September 11th Day of Remembrance Act. Will all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 450A recognizes the contributions of Def Jam to the music industry and music lovers everywhere by designating January 2024 as Def Jam Recognition Month in the City of New York. Will all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move into general discussion. It will be started with Councilmember Gennaro, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. As many people know, the Anna's administration rolled out the second portion of the rulemaking for Local Law 97, and I think it's important, I worked with the administration to create something that I wanted to do in my district, whereby we have the folks from the administration, folks in the Buildings Department, folks from M O C E J, meet with affected property owners to make sure they're getting the right information, the right advice, the right, you know, financial options. It's important that we get the right information out there for buildings that have to comply, and these would be working sessions. And the administration thought it'd be such a good idea that they want to take it citywide, and they're calling it 97 in your district. There was an email that went out to all the members from my office yesterday, and anyone who wants to avail themselves of this opportunity should just look at the email and reply. I'll also be sending out a letter that, you know, details what people, or what building owners need to do as the CAPA process rolls out, and they want to submit testimony or be part of the online hearing that's going to happen on October 24. So, you know, more to come on that. And I also want to make mention of a bill that I'm introducing today, 1169. It has to do with preventive approach on, on tree care. It will, it'll build on the, on the Tree Risk Management Program and reduce the Parks Department's backlog of low and moderate-risk tree work orders. It's a good bill. I'd like to thank the Chair of the Parks Committee, Councilmember Krishnan, for co-priming with me. And that concludes my statement. Thank you very much, Mr. Leader. Thank you, my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Gennaro. We'll now hear from Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Thank you very much. I know that all of us are concerned about micro-mobility safety, so Intro 1163 tries one more time to get added by making sure that DOT puts out information about bike safety and all the battery issues, making sure that the apps share it, and also give delivery workers equipment, headlight, taillight, reflectors, et cetera. That's 1163. And then there are several resolutions trying to get the state to do more. The Reso 747, Commercial E-Bike Licensing Act, which would require registration of bicycles in the Department State of Motor Vehicles, and I feel strongly that that would help us with this very complicated issue. Reso 750 would increase the penalty for leaving the scene of an accident on an e-scooter and add e-bikes to that legislation. 746 would ask that there be, and this is more or less what Councilmember Feliz has passed, UL certified on a statewide basis. Two other resolutions, one, of course, 749, trying to do what we've been trying and trying and trying, which is to get the Biden administration to make humanitarian parole available to everyone who is in our city at this time and who does not have it. I don't know why it's taking so long for the city to work with those who do have it, but that's what that resolution does. And 748, the Pharmacy Benefit Manager Transparency Act on a federal basis would really, really help small mom-and-pop independent pharmacies by outlawing deceptive practices perpetrated by the middle people who manage these benefits for millions of Americans. It's a big deal for small pharmacies. And finally, I want to say how much our condolences, or should be spread to Marty Algase, who died August 27. He was 72 years old, founder of Stonewall Dems, very active in the LGBT community, and a tenant advocate beloved, beloved. And the same, believe it or not, also born in 1951, Cynthia Doty, she died on July 17. She was a district leader, president of the Black Association, and the Manhattan Deputy Chief Clerk at the Board of Elections. May they both rest in peace, and they're both born the same year I was. It means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, from Councilmember Farias, followed by Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Majority Leader. For the record, the Bronx made hip hop a point-blank period for my colleagues. The council has been focused on expanding the amount of city public bathrooms available, thanks to the leadership of Councilmembers Nurse and Joseph and many others in this body. And I'm excited to add another important aspect to the discussion of accessibility in the bathrooms we do have with Councilmember Menon today. The majority of this room has personally experienced this issue. When was the last time you walked into a bathroom and there were no tampons or pads? It's critically important that menstrual products are available in all bathrooms, regardless of gender, for all people to ensure that no one experiences the desperation and somewhat shame that comes with not being able to find a tampon, pad, or menstrual cup when needed. That's why today, I, along with colleagues Menon Hudson, Abreu, Caban, and Public Advocate Williams, are proud to introduce Intro 1179 to include menstrual products in all our city bathroom facilities. I also want to take a moment to encourage colleagues to sign on to Intro 1177, a bill Councilmember Lewis and I are introducing today regarding the much-needed screening for endometriosis, a much debilitating disorder for women across our city. These bills are essential in making equity and access realized, and I urge and encourage all my colleagues to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Lewis, followed by Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Speaker Adams and Majority Leader. Today, along with Women's Co-Chair, Women's Caucus Co-Chair Amanda Farias, I'm introducing two pieces of legislation that will significantly, significantly enhance the health and well-being of New Yorkers by improving services and support from the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, also known as DOHMH. One in 10 women have symptoms of endometriosis at some point in their lives, and this number increases to one in three for women with polycystic ovarian syndrome, also known as PCOS. Despite this, few women are aware of the source of the debilitating pain, and even fewer seek treatment. Vulnerable populations within the city are disproportionately impacted by a lack of information about their ailments and historical lack of outreach on how to seek help. Intro 1177 will create a menstrual health program that will give access to screenings, referrals, and information for such conditions throughout the city by requiring DOHMH to conduct screenings for all individuals in need, contributing to our efforts to enhance health equity in the City of New York for all those impacted, and increasing menstrual health awareness for those who have been excluded from access to these vital services. In addition to introduce, in addition, I'm also introducing 1176, which mandates all food delivery platforms used by food outlets to post DOHMH-assigned health inspection grades on such platforms. More than ever, New Yorkers have the option to support businesses in their own communities, and beyond, and beyond, ordering food online. But there are no mechanisms in place for people to make informed decisions based on the food safety at these restaurants on these platforms. By improving transparency and encouraging restaurants to maintain high standards of cleanliness and safety, this law guarantees the city is exercising its due diligence to improve consumer health safety. These bills strengthen and increase transparency for health equity for all New Yorkers. I encourage my colleagues to sign on to these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Joseph, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader Powers, and colleagues. Today, I'm honored to address you as New York City Councilmember and Chair of the Committee on Education. I'm here seeking your support for two resolution I'm introducing, plus two bills. One resolution, I'm also co-prime sponsoring with my, three of my other colleagues, Resolution 742 with Councilmember Abreu, Intro, Intro 1174 with CM Hudson, and Introduction 1168 with CM Feliz. First, let's talk about two resolutions that were related to computer science for all and generative artificial intelligence. In collaboration with Manhattan Board President Mark Levine and his team, and my office carefully crafted these resolutions, which I'm super proud to introduce today. These two resolutions are about technology and to provide positive opportunities for this council to regulate and integrate the use of new technology tools, generative AI, within our public school system. In Reso 766, we urge New York City Department of Education to enhance their CS4All initiative. Our aim is to provide better access to CS4All professional development for educators, administrators, especially in underserved schools. This resolution also prioritized training for all teachers. By passing this resolution, we will empower our students with digital literacy, skill-responsible technology usage, and the understanding of data, privacy, and preparing them for promising future opportunities. Moreover, it will equips our educators to effectively teach computer science to benefit our students. Intro 767, we're calling upon New York City Department of Education to mandate training on generative artificial intelligence tools for all our educators. Artificial intelligence is no longer a distance concept. It is a practical tool used in various industries, both in the White House, US Congress, have been meeting with key stakeholders in generative AI to find better ways to regulate this tool. It is crucial for New York City at the local level to take this opportunity and to not fall behind. Our city needs policies to ensure its responsible use by starting with our public school system. This resolution ensures that educators are well-informed and ready to evaluate students' work while guiding them in responsible usage of generative AI for various creative purposes. And thank you, and I look forward to my colleagues supporting this.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Councilmember Riley.
Just want to thank everyone for the birthday shout-outs. Today, I'm introducing the DOE Reporting Bill, which comes in response to yet another year of unclear budgeting processes within the Department of Education, NYC Schools. My goal with this bill is simple: transparency and accountability. We want NYC schools, public schools, to provide annual reports on key aspects of food, of school operations, information that is currently not mandated but is essential for informed decision-making. These reports will dig deeper into demographic data and types of support staff that exist, but will also report on the existence and condition of facilities like science labs, cafeterias, and gyms. By having access to this information, administrative staff, policymakers, educators, parents, and the public will be better equipped to understand the state of our schools, pinpoint areas for improvement, and ensure that resources are distributed fairly. Additionally, I'm excited to co-prime some tech-related bills introduced by Councilmember Joseph and Councilmember Abreu. I encourage everyone to join Chair Joseph and myself at our upcoming hearing, focusing on the role of AI, emerging technology, and computer instruction in our public schools on September 20. And we're planning to dive more into this topic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Riley, followed by Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm honored to co-prime, excuse me, co-sponsor Intro 1167 with my colleague, Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, which will strengthen our emergency response efforts citywide. Our city has a responsibility to be proactive when it comes to our approach to emergency response. Councilmember Dinowitz and I know firsthand, and I know many of my colleagues, especially in the Bronx, know firsthand how extensive the challenges can be to support families in emergency needs. A horrific apartment fire took place in Wakefield section of the Bronx, displaced 61 people in January, heavily impacting families and the surrounding neighborhood. There was an immediate need to navigate our city's service systems, and we witnessed firsthand how severe the supply challenges were. This highlights the needs for emergency response centers in every district. Intro 1167 will be critical to improving our city's emergency response infrastructure. I urge my colleagues to sign on to this bill. We need these centers citywide, which will support our efforts to serve those in need with timely resources during emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you. Today, I'm excited to introduce a pair of bills, Introductions 1164 and 1165. The first would add an investment roadmap to the Streets Plan Law to expand on, and enshrined into the Streets Plan DOT's work towards making equitable infrastructure investments throughout the city. Out-of-borough communities of color in the city have been ignored and under-invested for much longer than 10 years, so the Streets Plan Law should involve taking a hard look at the state of inequity in our city. I note that during yesterday's hearing, the recent hearing, excuse me, in the Committee on Transportation Infrastructure, DOT was unable to provide an update on its progress toward meeting legally mandated Streets Plan requirements. It would be important for the council to continue to hold them accountable to the law. I am also introducing a bill to add two commissioners to the New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission Board, and the, and require that two commissioners of the TLC be drivers. There are hundreds of thousands of licensed drivers in New York City whose livelihoods are regulated by the TLC, yet not a single TLC commissioner is an active, full-time driver. Drivers deserve a representation on the TLC. They deserve to have a stake in their future. I look forward to holding a hearing on this introduction and to talk about how we can continue to uplift New York City's TLC drivers. I encourage all of my colleagues to sign on to these pieces of legislation. Thank you. And also, I'd like to disclose, I'm a member of Allen AME Cathedral of New York, and in the Transparency Resolution, we are funding the pantry. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Dinowitz, followed by Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today, with my colleague and friend, Councilmember Riley, we are introducing Intro 1167, which, if passed by this body, would require the Department of Emergency Management to identify and designate facilities within each community district to serve as rapid-response emergency centers. In January, Councilmember Riley and I went to the scene of a devastating fire in the neighborhood of Wakefield, a neighborhood that he and I both have the honor to represent. 61 people were displaced from their homes with little more than the clothes on their back, and their lives were upended within the span of just a few hours. Luckily, they were able to take shelter at a local school, and luckily, we were able to provide them with clothing. But we cannot rely on luck when it comes to disaster relief. No one can predict a disaster, so we must be prepared, and this bill will do just that. With the proliferation of fires in the Bronx and across the city, we need to do more than just give moral support. We have to help in concrete ways that will truly make a difference in the lives of those affected by disaster. Emergency relief centers, one per community board district, will enable our city to take swift action and relief efforts, and allow our neighbors to more easily continue with their lives. I'm proud to introduce this bill today with Councilmember Riley, and encourage everyone, everyone to sign on to Introduction 1167, a critical piece of legislation that will go a long way in helping victims of disasters.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you. I'm proud to be introducing Intro 1171 with Councilmember Wrestler. This bill would require the Commission on Human Rights, with the Office to Prevent Hate Crimes, and the Office of Ethnic and Community Media, to conduct a robust outreach campaign to combat antisemitism. The campaign centers the following four tenets. One, the prevention of antisemitic prejudice- The campaign centers the following four tenets: One, the prevention of antisemitic prejudice, harassment, and violence; Two, the contributions of Jewish New Yorkers throughout history; Three, the impacts of antisemitic hate crimes; and Four, principles and practices to promote equity, inclusion, and understanding. It is a privilege to represent such a diverse Jewish community, and I'm grateful for the congregations and community leaders who welcomed me into their holy spaces and helped inform this bill. I also want to share a reflection on the 22nd anniversary of 9/11. I'm grateful to this council for uplifting the heroes of this solemn day and mourning those we lost. As a Muslim New Yorker, it is also important for me to acknowledge the Islamophobia and xenophobia that emerged after 9/11, including the N Y P D's unconstitutional surveillance of Muslims, which broke down trust in my communities, and the rise of anti-immigrant policies, notably the creation of ICE. As immigration chair, I also want to honor the 100-plus undocumented workers who died during the attacks and/or due to the health impacts of cleanup, yet are still not recognized in the memorial. During this moment where our new arrivals are being wrongly demonized, it's important to remember that it is our immigrant workers who went bravely into the rubble and got our city on the path to recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we hear from Councilmember Feliz, followed by Councilmember Palladino.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Last year, we had approximately 220 fires due to defective e-bike batteries. This year, we've already had 175 fires due to bad batteries. We are concerned about these numbers. At the same time, we are dedicated to resolving that fire safety problem, and we could only resolve it by increasing access to the safe and the certified e-bikes. So first, I want to congratulate you, Majority Leader, for making that swap program a reality. We're the first in the country, if I'm correct, to do something like this, so major congratulations. Also, everyone in the delivery ecosystem must help resolve this crisis. So today, I'm proud to introduce a bill that will require delivery apps to provide safe and certified batteries to workers who don't have one. Everyone must help resolve this fire safety challenge, especially delivery apps who have their biggest market by far right here in the city of New York. If we pass this bill, we would be the first in the entire country to do something like this, so I look forward to the many conversations about this bill. We'll require a lot of conversations, a lot of technical stuff. Also, look forward to making this a reality, and most importantly, I look forward to putting an end to these fires due to these defective e-bike batteries. I also want to thank all the co-primes, including our Majority Leader, Keith Powers, and Councilmembers Marjorie Velazquez, Shawna Abreu, Rita Joseph, and Gil Brewer. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Now, here from Councilmember Palladino, and if there's anyone else signed up, you can raise your hand. Thanks.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to talk a little bit about my Intro 913. With all due respect to my colleague, I have to say Local Law 97, this city is not ready yet for Local Law 97 to be introduced on the 1st of January in 2024. It's a direct blow to the most purest form of affordable housing this city has ever known, and that's co-ops and condos. What my Intro 913 offers is a rolling seven-year delay. We are facing coming 2024, $213 million placed on assorted condos and co-ops throughout the city. By the year 2030, $892 million in fines will be issued to co-op and condo owners should they not be in compliance. They speak about the forms of, the way they're going to offer the loans, and I will tell you this: The forms of the financial assistance that they are offering will place a primary lien on co-ops and condos that do not now have an already existing mortgage, which will make it almost impossible for the stakeholders to sell their co-op or their condos with a lien placed on it. Local Law 97, we are not ready for it yet. We do not have a feasibility study done yet, and I am pleading with my colleagues here in council to please sign on to 913. Nobody is against Local Law 97. What we are against is how quickly it's going to be implemented and how it is going to affect the middle class, which is already overburdened and cannot take anymore. Our seniors, our young people starting families, affordable housing in its purest form will now become unaffordable if we put it in as quickly as they want. I'm just looking for a delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Ressler.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader and Madam Speaker. It's good to be with you all. Local Law 97 is the single most important bill that this city council has passed in many, many years. It drives down emissions from our largest source of pollution, big buildings, which amount to nearly 70% of the emissions in New York City. What we should be doing as a council is providing hands-on support to big buildings around our community. The law is already having a positive effect. Nearly 20% of buildings were subject to penalties next year. Now, it's already down to just 11% of buildings being subject to penalties because they're already making the improvements. In District 33, we're hosting a Sustainable Building Resource Fair next week, September 21st, from 4 to 7 at Borough Hall, where we will have nonprofits with technical expertise, dozens of contractors, folks who provide financing, providing hands-on technical assistance to help co-ops and condos and big buildings across our district and across Brooklyn decarbonize. Instead of wringing our hands and hoping that climate change won't destroy our city, state, and planet, it's time to get to work. It is time to take this seriously, and it is time to drive down our emissions and decarbonize our buildings. No delays can be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members, before we do anything, I just want to recognize, I see my friend, Mike Corbett, from Councilmember Velazquez's office, who's leaving the council to head to the Board of Elections. I just want to congratulate him and thank you for his service here as well, and thank you for, I think you hit your term limits, my friend at the council. With that, I'll now call Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of September 14, 2023, is hereby adjourned.